Good evening, everyone. We will start with item 1.0, which is Presentation and Proposal Request Regarding Athletics. So whoever would like to come forward and address the board, please come forward. Yes, we received a request from several parents to address the board with regard to athletics in the public schools. We have several people who would like to address this. I'd also like to mention that we have a town council member here, Julie Clay. So if you would like to come up and add anything to this, Julie, from the town's perspective, you're welcome to.
Thank you.
Good evening. Randy Neal, Southern City Terrace. I'm going to speak very briefly on the background of the parent group which sits here tonight. Give you a little timeline of what's been happening. First of all, though, I would like to read from the Board of Education's policy. I found it online. It's Community Relations Board of Education for all communication with the public. I don't want to vouch for it. The Board of Education recognizes the importance of community support in enhancing the quality of local education. Its efforts will be directed to keeping the community informed about curriculum, programs, activities, important events, and achievements of their school system. The Board believes that school-community relations are enhanced by open communication in which both community members and school personnel play their respective roles for the best interests of the school district. It will provide opportunities for the receipt of comments and suggestions from the community. The other one is just a little snippet I found on the bottom of some of the Board of Ed emails, and it reads, "The Vernon Public Schools, in partnership with family and community, is committed to provide a quality education with high expectations." With that being said, seated here tonight is an involved family and community working to achieve high expectations. We are a parent group that formed approximately 2011, representing a cross-section of sports at RHS and the youth level. We became known as the Voice for RHS Sports Parent Action Group, or VPAG. We are committed to promoting and improving the overall health of sports at RHS. VPAG first met with the RHS Athletic Director and Principal in February of 2012. The group strongly agreed that these meetings were not meant to be a bright session, but rather a fact-based problem-solving partnership with the administration. The admin and VPAG met monthly over the next two years. In August of 2012, it was slower than expected. Progress being made, the superintendent of schools was invited to sit on subsequent meetings. Some issues were worked out, but no consistent policies or protocols were in place. In August of 2013, VPAG met with the new RHS administration. At that meeting, the administration wanted to expand the group to include as many parents as possible. At that point, the administration handled any future parent meetings regarding athletics, and that brings us here. And that's it for me.
My name is Scott Agalum, 23, Dock Road in Vernon. I'm currently the president of Vernon Youth Football and Cheerleading, which comprises about 200 children. I currently am the head coach of the nine- and 10-year-old team, which is approximately 35 children. I was part of the group that started Vernon Youth Football in 2004. I also formed the South Windsor Youth Football League. I've been the commissioner of football for Connecticut Youth Football League for many years in a group of 14 towns, approximately 2,500 children, and approximately 300 football coaches. This is my 16th year coaching in this town. I've lived here for almost 30. I own a business in town for 32 years. I have been the president of RHS Booster Club in the past. And what I wanted to tell you tonight is just some of the experiences that I've had. You wanted to know some instances. This is one that really gets to me. More than three quarters of the football players currently at the high school came through the Vernon Youth Program. And over half, I personally coached when they were nine and 10. These student athletes are part of my football family, and I've tried to do what I can do to see that they get what they need out of the high school program. And this is the reason I'm here tonight. I believe all successful sports, and other non-sport programs for that matter, have one common denominator: a great head coach or leader. A person who's not only a coach, but also a mentor and a guidance counselor. A great coach leverages the love of the sport, which he or she cultivates, to get the most out of a student. A great coach can steer students down a better path with that leverage, keep students in school with that leverage, make a student have a better life with that leverage. Leveraging the love of the sport usually gives a coach more power than even their parents can. They can be highly effective guidance counselors for our students, and they come at a relatively low cost. So why don't we hire right and get great coaches? I've worked with most of the football coaches since Coach Dunn left, and I can tell you, I worked with Coach Jaren Cohen, who was the first coach to take over after Dunn. He was hired, and I also served on three hiring committees at the high school. The process that I went through was flawed almost every single time. And I'll go through a few of these real quickly. After Coach Dunn left in 2005, Steve Phelps hired Jaren Cohen, a teacher and assistant coach from Windsor High School. Coach Cohen was young, and the players loved him. He was a real player's coach and instilled a love of the sport in most of his players. He started to rebuild the program, getting more students to come up for the sport. He worked with all the players and started a mandatory after-school study hall for the players, and worked with all of them to keep the grades up. Coach Cohen placed many students in college in his few years at the high school. Unfortunately, he was promised a teaching position at RHS, and it never came to pass, even though the job openings were available in his field, they were filled by others. Coach Cohen left RHS in 2008, went to Colorado Springs High School, where he turned that program around and was honored as Coach of the Year in 2009. We hired right, we just didn't keep the promise we made for a great coach. After that, the hiring process became passive and seemingly unfortunate. In the first interview session, what was involved with there were only five applicants, two of which were hired as a coach and assistant, the other three had no business even interviewing. Why were there only three applicants? We were not privy to the application process, so I had no idea what was done to recruit, but obviously it was minimal. The next hiring session apparently yielded 20-plus applicants, of which the interview committee only saw five. And all the others were weeded up by the AD before we started. Again, we were handed resumes, letters of recommendation, plan books that the coaches had on the day of the interviews. We never got a chance to look over any of the literature they had. Of the five, we picked the best two to lock, and the principal and AD made the final decision. We ended up losing the head coach in June, only months after the hire. He recommended his assistant coach, was accepted as an interim coach for the season by the AD. At the conclusion of that interim coach's season, we waited for a month before the job was posted. The posting was up for a couple of weeks over the Christmas break, and then we were given all the applications, a total of five. The interview process began January 15. We recommended two candidates, almost far superior to them. In the end, all five interviews concluded that day, and a month later, I heard that the best candidate had taken another job in the meantime. I asked if we could open the interviews again, but it declined. Now we come to the current year hire, that I watched from the sidelines, though I'm not part of this one, so this is what I have gathered from people that I know. Job was posted on October 15, because this was an interim coach this year. Posted October 15 on Simply Hired website. The job, to my knowledge, was never posted on the CIAC website, which is where coaches usually look for jobs. While the season ended on Thanksgiving, the applications continued until mid-January. A couple of coaches I know tell me they applied, so I was aware of how the process was proceeding through them. One coach who I had asked to apply put in his application in December. He was interviewing for other jobs beginning in January, and ended up taking another position before we even began interviewing. Another coach said he got a call at the end of January for an interview for an applicant he put in in October. He was taken aback and asked, "Who is this?" The interview process went on in February, and a new coach was named the second week of March. In the end, we were lucky to get a great head coach, even given the delayed hiring process. We could have gotten possibly a better coach, we'll never know. Football may be on track now with a great coach, but if this is the standard hiring practice for all sports, we need to stop hoping for luck to get it done. We are competing for great coaches with other towns like East Catholic. We form an eight-man selection committee to make sure they get great coaches to apply. They understand the importance a great coach can have on the kids. Our process passively posts a position for three months and can't even bother to post it on the CIAC site where most coaches live. All sports have a hiring window that begins at the end of the season and should be completed before the season begins. Football's end of season is Thanksgiving, and it begins the second or third week of January. So knowing we were interviewing for a new head coach at the end of the season, why did we wait until February, when the best applicants were picked by the ad? The football season starts in the middle of January with waitlisting and getting a coach in position where he has leverage to get the players on board, work with them on the grades. Why did we wait till March to officially hire? We knew in July we were going to go through this process. I'm guessing the Coach Cohen hiring process is approximately 30 to 40-hour commitment by the AD. And maybe simply we are not giving them the time to move quickly with this process with a half-time or stipend position. Over the past 10 years, we have failed to properly set ourselves up for success in the football coach hiring and retention process, and possibly that is a direct result of part-time people doing full-time positions. I have many personal stories of players making it and others failing. I will gladly talk about any of those if anybody wants at any time. I have coached a lot of kids in my day, and I've seen a lot of them come through. I've seen them fail out of school, and I've seen them come back to school. So that's all I have. Have any questions I can answer?
Hi, my name is Gary Cutting. Gary Cutting, 9 U D Corp. Wanted to say thank you to everyone here for taking the time to hear our concerns. I'm going to be speaking on some of the specifics of the CIAC Athletic Program Evaluation that was dated May of 2009. I understand most of you or all of you should have been supplied a copy of this electronically, and I hope you had a chance to review it. This self-evaluation was something that the athletic administration volunteered to do on their own and outlines pros and cons of the program at the time, and offers numerous recommendations moving forward, many of which we feel are unaddressed today. I'm going to quote directly from this evaluation with page numbers for general reference for your convenience, as it's somewhat of a lengthy document. To start, RHS Athletic Mission Statement and Core Values were developed and approved by the Department and Board of Ed in 2007. Per the report, that was on page nine, but per the report, RHS needs to develop biannual formal programs for, a biannual formal program for review of its athletic mission that affords input and opportunity for discussion among all constituents and assures that the mission continues to reflect the need of the student athlete, the school, and the community. That's page 10. Page 7 states, "One of the challenges acknowledged is there is no strategy in place for athletic or athletic plan improvement. I was asked to touch on the lack of a feeder program at BCMS for popular high school sports, such as boys' and girls' volleyball and boys' and girls' lacrosse. Having time and resources at BCMS to develop these interests would be beneficial at the high school level." Another point was, "The school shall have a long-range facilities plan to upgrade," which is page 16. I believe during the June 5 meeting at RHS, it was determined that there really wasn't a capital improvement plan in place, but one would be completed in two months, so I expect that's forthcoming very shortly. Initiated plan to complete the upgrade of outdoor facilities and to address inequities, page 20. There are specifics outlined here, and these inequities are, among others, based between baseball and softball. It is mentioned, and it goes on to recommend, "Conduct periodic meetings between the athletic department, parks and rec, town facilities department, and the building committee so that all parties are actively involved in renovating and making decisions." At the time of the survey, parent groups did express concern about the lack of supervision at each field. Restrooms were not open, there was no access to a defibrillator. Communications and cooperation between departments when dealing with field usages were a problem. Inability to adequately maintain fields due to lack of resources was also suggested to be enhanced. That was page 18. I believe this also came up in the June 5 meeting. The CIAC report concluded, "In the past, the funds allocated in the budget have only provided the bare minimum for each program." That's on page 17. I assume this infers going forward in 2009, at the time in 2009, our goal would be to exceed the bare minimum of the past years. There was commendations within the report, the Board of Ed was, and the administration was recognized for supporting the position of a full-time athletic director at the time, page 20. "The school district shall provide appropriate personnel with adequate time and resources to ensure effective administration of the athletic department." Page 21. "There are no formal surveys conducted to seek input on the success and needs of the athletic program." Page 27, that was at the time. This was an early initiative of the VPAG group, as we created an online parent and student survey two years ago that was met with minimal support and administered poorly, reverting back to spotty use of paper surveys to select teams and athletes. Our intent at the time was to assist in the gathering of confidential feedback from parents and students and student athletes to accelerate changes within the athletic program. One of the last points mentioned in the survey is, "Evidence gathered during the interviews substantiated that there is no strategy in place to develop an action plan for program improvements on an annual basis," is page 28. There are some good points that came out of the evaluation. There's an athletic handbook that's distributed every season, and there's a meet-the-coaches night every season where sometimes we, the parents, watch a how-to-behave-at-sporting-events video. The reason I chose to talk about this report and the findings is because the evaluation dates back to 2009 and outlines many concerns we are dealing with today. The parents here have been working on this for over two years. Through two administrations, we are requesting fast action for the betterment of the athletics at RHS. And I too would be happy to answer any questions related to anything. On the CIAC evaluation or ed final.
Hi, Patty Neal, Southern City Terrace. I have been involved with the VPAG group since the start of it, and as Randy mentioned, we were really sitting on the sidelines, hearing a lot of parents complain at the youth level that they weren't going to send the kids to Rockville High. A lot of it was with sports. And having been a graduate of Rockville High School and moving back to town, hearing my four brothers constantly saying, "What has happened with the sports at RHS?", rather than sit on the sidelines and continue to complain, we figured we'd try and reach out, partner with people, and make some positive change. So with that, we formed a group. I had sought guidance from people from the Board of Ed, people in town on boards that I work with and so forth, to see what was the best place and way to make inroads, and really basically navigate the political palace. Parents before said, "Good luck, you're going to bang your head against the wall for four years, leave, and then hopefully somebody else picks up the group with you guys." At first, it was a slow go, but we absolutely felt we were making progress in trying to initiate change and look at systemic, what I would call, low-hanging fruit. We looked through the policy of the CIAC evaluation. Some good things have come from it, but it's at a very snail's pace. In the meantime, we were up there watching kids not return to sports year over year over year, losing records. So we decided to continually meet with the administration, and the principal and AD at the time decided that they would partner with us. We brought up the survey and started to try and get a sense of what was the problems. Why are people not coming to Rockville High? Why are we having to pay for magnet schools? Why are kids going to East Catholic when they're really winning in the youth levels and having a great sense of pride and then don't want to come at Altar High School, which hurts our town? One of the things we realized is, the prior administration, the impression we all had was that Steve was a full-time AD. We quickly learned that, no, he was not. He also was in charge of PE and health curriculum across the whole district, and that also took some of his time. What we tried to do is work with Kim and Eric at the time to see what things we could take and work on to sort of supplement, because we were quickly realizing that there's just not enough time in the day to deal with all of the turnaround that needed to be done up there. Then a new administration came in. We were still concerned that it was .5. We learned that it was not. It was reduced to a stipend position. Are now under the impressions going back to .5. But as the CIAC evaluation's conclusion on page 23 back then, the impression was there was a full-time administrative assistant at the school and a full-time AD. We were barely keeping the lights on with that, and that was as of '09. We feel that it's continued to go backwards, and are very concerned that, you know, I don't think it's a win that we're going back to .5 AD again. And what you've also done is taken that particular individual and split their special ed jobs, and now we have to backfill in our special ed role as well. This past year, as Mary admitted in our June 5 meeting, was rocky. The person that was there was doing the best they could, but they had another full-time job. They didn't really bring that to the school to this day and end it for the students. And we're just very concerned that in light of where we're headed, a .5 AD again is not going to cut it to do all the systemic work that we need to do to promote and turn around the image at RHS, get the programs where we need to be, work with Public Works, or now was Parks and Rec, on where we want to go with the vision of the fields. We're reading in the paper, other towns are getting grants for turf fields. When I approached some people in the town, they said we would never qualify for it. I wasn't quite sure why. But these are things that are vision, and I know we went to a 2025 Vision Meeting, you know, year over year, but where do the Board of Ed see us being with our athletics? Where do we see, what's our benchmark for towns to compare to? South Windsor had an article in the paper that they're looking at an Avon of Harventown. We go out to play lacrosse at Ramby, they have two random turf fields, and we can't even get out of fields. So those are just some of the concerns we have, and we would like to know, you know, what the Board plans to do to be accountable to help turn it around at the high school, because it's been four-plus years. Our youngest is now going to be a sophomore, and we don't run out of time. You know, I mean, at what point do you just say, throw your hands up and say, "Well, we tried"? And we were hoping that we could get some kind of action plan in place to move forward with the Board of Ed and the administration at the school, and really think that we need to be out there looking for a person that is an athletic director. We keep backfilling roles up there, and right now, we have a doctorate, you know, a PhD person that's doing the best they can and working through the issues, but again, they're .5. And if we feel that that person is the best candidate, I think we should be posting the position and seeing what else is out there as well, and get some feedback to them where we want to go with the programs.
Open it up to questions. Anybody want to start with some questions?
I'd like to know the status of the CIAC evaluation in terms of what the administration awards role should have been.
Dr. Pasell and Mr. Rocket, could you know?
Yeah, they weren't here when this was written, and it was 2009. I wouldn't expect to hold their feet to the fire. I'm wondering what's been done since 2009 relative to the recommendations in that report.
I can certainly go through, and I was not here in 2009 either, I can go through and tell you what I have checked off as done or is in process, which I did. But that would be spotty at best. Certainly, Dr. Pasell knows much more than I do, because she's on the ground. But Mr. Rocket may know some things, but I think Dr. Pasell would know more than I do about this, and that's putting her on the spot as well.
I don't need to put you on the spot, Dr. Pasell. If that's something that you need a little bit of time to prepare, but I'd really like to know in terms of recommendations, how many have been checked off the list? How many are in process, and how many have been ignored?
You know, I certainly can give you numbers-wise a report. I don't have, wrote down my numbers. I've gone through the entire report, and certainly for myself, have made notes what we've accomplished, and we accomplished an incredible amount just this year alone in terms of following through on some of those recommendations. And so is everything checked on? Absolutely not, but I'd be happy to do that for you and even share with you my notes next to, you know, the items to let you know where they are. I don't have it prepared for tonight, but I certainly could do that for you, absolutely.
I understand that. Maybe we could make that as an agenda item early when we start back in again, just so that we know what's going on. I've only been around for two years, but I don't remember ever addressing this report or the recommendations. Do I need to make that in a form of a motion, or would it end up as an agenda item?
Let's continue our discussion.
Okay. During the budget process, we were told that, and Mr. Rocket confirmed for us, that .5 AD works, and the administration supported that as well. Yet, I'm hearing this evening that there were plenty of opportunities to hear that it wasn't working well, and I'm wondering, not singling out, well, I guess I am, I'm wondering why the liaison at the high school or the chairperson who was attending some meetings didn't give us any feedback prior to, so that we had a sense of what the people who are living it were going through, what our deficits were, what our needs were that weren't being met. I don't remember ever being told any of that during the process, simply that administration, including Mr. Rocket, said .5 is working. And apparently, it wasn't.
It wasn't .5 this past year. It was a stipended position.
I understand, I understand.
But he was saying that he believed .5 would work. Mr. Rocket?
Yes. Thank you. So as the chair pointed out, this year is a stipended position. It became clear very, very early that the time demand was far more than the stipended position could handle. I understand the move to that a year ago, given other demanding priorities, but again, it was clear it did not work. So I strongly supported a movement to a .5. Would it be nice to have a full-time one? It would be great. But as the Board probably knows, I have other higher priorities for next year. Those would include things like a math teacher, a tech ed teacher, a special ed teacher, and a half-time art teacher, things like that. So I think it will work out next year. Facts in the year will tell us whether it does.
Can you tell me why you think it will work this coming year when it hasn't worked in past years?
Well, we're moving to a 0.5 position. I've seen some districts that have half-time similarly sized to ours. I've seen some where it's stipended. I've seen some with a 1.0. I think it varies. I think with what Lois is able to accomplish this year, a stipended position was fabulous, even dramatic improvement in some areas. She prepared a handout on some of the successes this year. And so this is a tremendous increase. Again, I have to balance everything in terms of what I perceive the need. And if you were to ask me, "Could we have a full-time?", I'd love to support it, but you asked me to look at the entire need of the building.
So when the position was moved to .5, it was just assumed that Lois would move into that role and then backfill her special ed role?
Was the .5 ever posted, so other candidates could take a look at that? And let's not forget also that along the .5 is getting increased for next year. That's terrific, but they're also losing .5 administrative assistant. So we're gaining, we're adding by subtracting. I just wanted to throw that little tidbit out there. So actually, the .5 AD will now have to take on So actually, the .5 A D will now have to take on a .5 administrative assistant role as well.
We had, just to address staffing, we had a number of administrators because we reduced positions. They get assigned positions. And so obviously, this was a good match for, for Lois. She'd been doing A D, so it would be .5 now that it is an administrative position in the union. She was assigned the .5 A D for the coming year, and we had, we had a .5 and .45 in terms of special ed. And so the .45 has been posted, and the jobs were all changed in special ed because we reduced there by .5 as well. So her and I don't even remember which particular assignment she has, Mrs. Buell and Mrs. and Dr. Posel are here so they can share what her specific assignment is. But it's not what it was last year. We had to reorganize the special ed completely.
Well, we're not going out and looking for, and this is not against Dr. Posel at all. She's done a job trying to do two jobs this year. But what my concern is, after looking at the C I C study and realizing Steve was there for eight years at .5, and we barely kept the lights on and took a lot of programs down at .5, we're going back to .5, losing an admin. We have an A D that is a parent as well, so has to wear multiple hats in that school because their children are in sports there. And we're, we're going to just wait and see if it works again? And that's a concern. I mean, as a parent and somebody that's been working hard, we keep sort of getting the same answers that, well, we're going to wait and see. And in the meantime, there's another class that goes by that I don't think we're really giving the kudos to, or lost opportunity of kids that aren't coming to Rockville High School. I mean, there's a lot of work to do. Just the fact that we sat in a June 5th meeting and nobody knew a capital vision plan and had any idea of a calendar event of what we need to do with our fields. And, you know, Dr. Posel's out there trying to figure out how she's going to line a field or whatever. I mean, there's not a lot of quick communication and partnering that really needs to take place, and it takes a lot of time, as you all know. And that I have a big concern about.
Mr. Rocket, did you want to say something?
Well, I just share so many of those concerns. I mean, they're, they're great, valid concerns. But again, it's not just athletics. It's not just sports that, that are under fiscal pressure. I do bemoan the fact that we lost half an administrative position. I bemoan the loss of three teachers at the high school. I bemoan the secretarial, which means I'm doing, I mean, we, we were under tremendous financial pressure, while I agree with so many of the points. The full picture is we have many, many, many competing demands at the high school.
Mrs. Bush? No, I'm sorry. No, Mrs. Art's still in the pool. I'm sorry.
But I wonder, I keep going back to the report because it seems to me had, had the recommendations in the report been addressed early on after the report was published, that maybe we wouldn't, maybe we wouldn't be facing some of the concerns that we are. So I, I wonder how, how is a part-time A D going to address the remainder? I mean, we don't know exactly what those are, and it's going to address the remainder of the recommendations. And it's, it seems like I'm hearing we've made commitments that we haven't kept in terms of what we're going to do, when we're going to meet. The Board hasn't been informed. We hear from the parents that things are falling into the cracks. Field maintenance, equipment, scheduling, through the, not the fault of the, of the A D. I hear all over the place that she's doing a tremendous job. It's not her, it's the lack, it's the lack of time. So how are we going to meet the commitments that we've made when a halftime didn't work when we had halftime? Nothing's changed. We're going, I mean, we say, okay, we're going from stipended to half, but it didn't work when we had halftime. So what's, what's, why would you expect that it would be different?
I don't know that it wasn't working when we had a halftime athletic director. That was never brought forward.
I was hearing that it didn't work.
Well, that's what the study was on you was halftime.
Right.
Right?
At, at this point, when our lead head group started working, they wanted to improve athletics, which is marvelous, a fantastic group. One of the first suggestions was to include student and parent evaluation, not evaluation, the surveys of the coach and of the season and all of that outstanding idea, 360 evaluation. And so that is not perfect yet, but, but it has been done for two years anyway. And there were other areas that, I'm sorry, escaped me right at this moment, but there were things that needed to be worked on. But at that point, in the first year of the, of the group meeting, no one brought to me that we need a full-time athletic director, that it wasn't working. Mr. Phelps didn't seem to say, I mean, this needs to be full-time. Dr. Posel has not said this needs to be full-time. So that has not been brought to us, so it has not been in the budget, which is one board we care about. That's why I went back to halftime because obviously the stipend was not enough.
We didn't come to the budget meetings because it was in the paper last summer that this was going to be a full-time A D position in the budget, which is what we were led to believe. And then we didn't realize until March and March that it had been cut. And that's why we sort of reconvened, and I reached out actually to Ann and said, you know, people are really upset because now we're still back to where we were. Yes, everybody thinks .5 is better than stipended, but in my mind, we're back to where we were when I walked in, when Cameron was a freshman. Then we had the June 5th meeting, a lot of other things came out. Not only is it the athletics, but it's the fields, the safety, everything else that's sort of been a gap. So those are things I think that we have to hold people accountable to address because we've been trying to meet and make inroads, but it was apparent at the June 23rd Board of Ed meeting that a lot of people had no idea that this group even was put together three-plus years ago and had been meeting and working with people one-on-one and really trying to partner and move things forward. So that's why a lot of the documentation I think was sent out to you guys. But we vote you in for Board of Ed to be closer to it and to be able to have inroads into the schools. And I know that's not easy to do, but we really try to be a voice of a lot of parents. There's a unified booster club that's being looked at to be put together, and frankly, that is a ton of work. And there's a diabolical difference of opinion in what the administration thinks and how it should work and how the parents think it should work. And we're looking at it going, you know, we're being asked a lot of volunteers to work on that. We're spending Wednesday nights up there writing bylaws and doing the best we can. But at the same time, none of the other things that we think are concerns, I'm, we're afraid it's going to just get pushed right off the table.
Yes, I do want to thank you for the documentation because I was not aware of all the meetings and things like that. And what I'm seeing here, and I'm seeing it from the past, is communication and working together. And I think that is the key right here. And I'm seeing from the C I A C evaluation that we need a plan in place and we need all stakeholders to be involved in it. I would love to see something put together that includes board members, that includes administrators, parents. I'd also like to see Parks and Rec involved. So we're getting, we're going to have, you know, the, the groups that are feeding into our programs involved as well. And I'd like to see D P W involved in it as well because I think, as we always say, it takes a village to build students and student athletes. And I think that that would be the start, really taking and making it a group effort to make sure that we have good coaches, good facilities, that we're all working together to make sure that the kids are supported. My kids went through and were on sports teams, and I think that was a very important time in their life. And I, I think we should really look into starting some kind of committee to really stay on top of this. We have committees for other things. Why not have a committee to make sure that our students, our student athletes are getting the best of what they can get? And I think that would be the start right now. I mean, Mr. Rocket has told you that we, we only have so much money in our budget right now. Let's start making some headway to work together. Let's get Mr. Kleinhans, let's get Bruce Denny, let's get everybody together, working together to make this a good group so we can have the best.
I think if, if I can address that, part of the study talks about that, and it's really getting back to at least partly the, the athletic director, having the time to do those type of higher level planning. And I think that's where it's getting lost right now. Those type of things aren't going on. I love the idea, I guess, of another committee, but I, I really feel that those sort of responsibilities would fall under an athletic director. I'm not sure our .5 is, is going to make it.
I understand. What I'd also like to add to that is that when we have the facilities, people, when we have the Parks and Rec who are the people who are working on our fields, and when we have that, all we need is to have that open communication from everybody. And she doesn't have to be out there, you know, actually doing the fields and stuff like that. It takes someone from the top just saying, you're responsible for this, you're responsible for this, you're responsible for that. And if it all comes together with communication, and I think that is the key, and that is one of the things this board is striving for, is communication. And that's, that's how I'm seeing it because I, I saw in the report that they really wanted us to form these committees to be able to stay on top of it and have a plan for the future of our, our teams and for our facilities. So I see this as a start right now, and I think that that is something that we need to get started very soon and work with you to make sure that these things are happening.
And I agree with that. I think we need a committee, but, and also, South Windsor also participated in this at the time. So we knew parents that were on V P A in the beginning that have worked on this and their kids have now moved on, so so on and so. And that was really '07 and '08. It was published in '09. What worries me is that when we're going around the table, yes, certain things have done, but not a lot of it has been done. So I agree, Laura, that absolutely a joint effort is needed across the town to really put some focus on it and how do we drive revenue into the fields? How do we put banners up like other schools? How do we promote the sport that we have a state championship softball team that if you go down in the outfield, you're going to break your ankle walking across the field? And, and it's true. I mean, last, a year ago, April, Parks and Rec moved the maintenance of the fields to Mark and his team. And they do a great job if they have a calendar and they know what to do. You know, we're up at the high school football field and there's no grass, and the irrigation didn't get fixed, which was a huge win at Legion Field and at Rockville High. And Mike got tired of us calling and saying that the field was in horrible shape. So I mean, we're making baby steps, but I agree, you have to have ownership, accountability, and who owns what functions. And then, you know, I'm sure people would step up and volunteer to be part of that. But I just think after, a lot of us feel like we were trying to make those inroads, and it is very apparent there was not a lot of communication, and our understanding was that you would have all been well aware that we had these meetings and these groups going for the last three, three years.
Dr. Posel, did you want to say something?
Just when it's appropriate, I prepared some information as well, Mr. Rocket and I, to share with you in terms of our plans and where we're headed in terms of most of the topics that you're discussing. So we have paperwork for you when that's available.
You can get that now, that would be fine.
I, I just wonder if that might be better as part of a comprehensive report for the Board.
Yes, thank you.
Do you want to address us now with that information?
Oh, yeah. Well, there's a difference between could I or do I want to? You know how that goes. Oh, I'm, I'm all set, thank you. Here, I'll pass them out here and pass them out to the Board. Yeah. So again, I, I very much agree with so many of the things said in terms of the need at Rockville High School generally and the need of the athletic department specifically. But having said that, I think from my perspective, I think Lois and my job this year was to really right the ship and steady the ship and then begin to move it forward. Some of the things we've put on the, on the list of accomplishments, I, I think it shows, I'll let Lois review them specifically. I, I consider from my perspective, from where we were to where we are, especially with some of these, very successful, even fabulously successful. That's not mutually exclusive with some of the need demonstrated tonight. You can have both. You can have the presence of success and need. So I'll turn it over to Lois to go over to some of the successes we've had this year, and then I'll, and then I'll give some bottom comments.
Thank you. The, the front of the page with the colored boxes is just all the components that I see are critical to an overall plan for an effective athletic department. And at the center of that is the student athlete, and I think all of this, and that, that's what we have to be talking about tonight, supporting the student athletes. And so you can see, these are some of the major components that I feel are important. If you'd like for me to do now, but it could take a long time, or I can do it for you in more of a form of report, but we have made significant progress in every one of these areas. And I think all of them, again, are critical to the support of our student athletes. The flip side is just all the successes we've had this year, and I think it's really, really important that we focus on these positive successes, that you guys know what they were. And we had a hugely successful year overall. We started out kind of slow in the fall. We had a very good winter, and we had a very, very good spring. So despite, you know, all departments have some issues and things that we need to work on, but our athletes had a pretty successful year overall. We've hired some outstanding coaches, and we've put standards in place for our student athletes and our coaching staff that I think have raised the bar for both groups that I think are really going to pay dividends for us. You know, and again, all of these areas that you see in terms of community connections, I met with representatives from Rockville Little Lake and Vernon Little Lake, and we talked about some plans for baseball. I met with the Vernon Lacrosse Association. I met with the Vernon U Soccer Association. We talked about plans. I have met with Park and Rec about the basketball programs. I was just in conversation with Bruce Denny last night through email about fields and the watering of the fields. We talk all the time. I talk with Mark all the time in terms of care of the fields and where we're at and what we need to do to make some of that better. I'm developing a marketing plan. I've done a lot of research in terms of what other towns are doing in terms of charging for games and what games and so on, and I'm developing a comprehensive plan for that. Coaches, you know, again, I know what a good coach is. I know what, how they run good practices or not. I know how game management should be done for being a coach myself. And, and so we've clearly made some changes that we needed to do in terms of our overall coaching staff that I think are making a big, a huge difference. And that, I feel, is one of my most critical roles, to hire the best coaches we can, to observe them, to evaluate them, and make sure that we're getting the best people possible into those positions because they will have the most direct impact on our kids. In terms of equipment, you know, I'm really looking at where we have safety issues and where we can buy equipment that is going to make our athletes better. And that is important, that we bought a few things already. I can give you an example for football. Every one of our, the applicants told us about Huddle, which is a computer analysis of game footage, and that you can show it to the, the kids, and they can analyze the game and help determine, you know, where they need to, where their mistakes were and where their successes were. And we have purchased that for the football program. By purchasing, purchasing it for the football program, now we can add other sports programs onto that at, at a reduced cost. And I've already talked to the boys and girls volleyball coach, the wrestling coach, the basketball coach about it, and they're all interested in that as well. And that's a fantastic resource in terms of this instruction of our athletes. And that's going to, again, make the most, the biggest determination whether we're successful as teams or not. You know, again, in terms of facilities, I've, I've looked at all of our facilities, both at the middle school and the high school. I know where we have issues, and we're going to take a look at where we can make some improvements. My biggest issues, you know, concerns right away are safety issues. Where did we have safety issues? And we have some. And so those are going to be my first things that we're going to address. I can give you a concrete example. It's, it's not particularly safe when our J V boys are playing baseball and we have tennis matches going on at the same time because foul balls go into the, certainly where the kids are sitting and the spectators, and the posse could even get to the courts. I've got to make a I gotta make a switch there to see what I can do to improve that. The tennis courts themselves have major cracks on them. The track is major cracks on it. We're getting those repaired next week. So I'm on top of all that. And we're addressing that and we'll look to make, continue to address those safety. And then, you know, how do we maintain them properly? And then if we need to upgrade in some areas, we'll try to collectively do some fundraising and so on to address those concerns as well. You know, uniforms and equipment for the kids, I have a plan for all that. For the first time, I am collecting all the uniforms from the coaches. I have cleaned out the uniform closet. It is organized. I know what we have and what we don't have, the exact condition of everything. I'm gonna go down now and work on that at BCMS. And so we'll be able to make better determinations in terms of what the kids need in terms of their uniforms. So in all these areas, I think we've made phenomenal progress. And again, if you flip over, to me, this is what's important for you guys to know. Look at all the successes these kids had. And they're terrific kids. And we have, like I said, a very organized plan to support them all through the process.
Anybody have any questions?
So I tell you, you already know my admiration for Dr. Posel and the job she's doing. I think she's just fabulous. I'll speak to the camera more. I'll tell you that, I really appreciate all the parents showing up tonight. I don't think there's a more dedicated group out there. I tell you that, I too am interested in the long-range planning. I've already told them that while I agree we have a long-term plan, it's okay to disagree professionally and politically on some of these things. That I appreciate their advancing their desires. I have different priorities. I think they understand and respect that. And it's okay to disagree with people on that. But I do personally appreciate their effort because they're giving up their nights also. So, and I recognize and appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, this is my question. I'm still within my time. One of the things that surprised me was the coach hiring in the process. I think that one of the things this group, the committee that we're looking at needs to really refine that process. Because, thank goodness, we got lucky and got a good football coach. And I know the importance of that. But we need to make sure that there's timelines in place and everything else ready to go, so we are getting the best. That's how they do it with administrators and teachers and all that. We need to make sure we strike when the best are available. So that was a concern of mine. And I just wanted to make sure that that is something that would be brought up with the committee. And I hope Mr. Rocket would, you know, be part of this committee as well.
Well, yes, ma'am. I really, of course, can't speak nor would I, if I could, about how it went in the past. I'll tell you that, I'm very happy with the procedure now. That it involves getting a group of people together, parent, student, administrator, teacher, and others. So it's a small yet diverse group. There's no one constituency that can run it. Not the school, not the parents, not the students, but it's a base of people. Initial review of resumes are done, and I think very appropriately done, by the athletic director. And then she presents a pool for the committee to review and to choose people to interview. And the way we have it set up is they recommend to the Dr. Posel and myself with a one-two ranking. I don't think it was a matter of luck that we got two fabulous coaches using that methodology, Coach Martens, Coach Tadio. We think we hit it out of the park with those two coaches. There's always an element of fortuitousness in it, to be sure. But it also, I think, is a reflection of the process. So I think it's not bad. I'd even say good, could be improved. But I think it got us two outstanding candidates.
Well, there's a few things I'd like to ask about that come from the minutes of your meetings. One of which is a curious item. It's found on your August 22nd, June 13th in your remaining 16 minutes. And you frequently refer to the culture at Rockville High School field. And even though you use that terminology, I'm not sure what that means. Could you please clarify what your group has discussed or what the concern is regarding the culture of the field at Rockville High? What is that?
Sure. So what we've gotten is feedback, and a lot of it was from the youth. Our two sons played five sports between them. And in the youth sports, they would say, you know, where are you going to high school? Oh, I'm going to Rockville High. Oh, really? Loserville? Really? And I would take huge offense to it. They felt like they were the Bad News Bears up at the fields that they play on. Some of the town fields are in much better shape than they are in high school. The softball field looks like the same it was when I graduated in 1979 and came back here. So I think that's what was the culture. It's that we just keep it, you know, keep the lights on, just keep going, club along. And as long as nobody calls and makes a fuss about stuff, we're good to go. And we've worked very hard with Parks and Rec in a lot of youth organizations as well. And I just don't feel it got the attention at the high school. So that was what a lot of the culture was about. And, you know, it wasn't pretty and it wasn't nice. And we probably put it a little more politically correct in minutes. But that was some of the discussions that we were having with Steve, that, you know, we realized we're turning the Queen Mary around in the bathtub. And we've said that to Lois. But there seems to be, just keeping the lights on is good enough. And I don't think that's what this town is all about.
Okay, thank you. Your answer might go in a different direction, so I appreciate you clarifying that. Okay. I have another area I'd like to ask about. And it really does touch on what Laura was referring to. And that is, I think, out of all of this, at the end of the day, when we all leave here tonight, it might be a better coordination of the roles and responsibilities of the, not only the constituent groups and people and individuals, but bringing, as Laura said, the Parks and Rec people together with not only the board, but the athletic director. And I'd like to see a representative from the town council on this same organization. Just footnote. Because I don't want all the work that goes into everything get to the annual budget process and have the council go, well, sorry. You know, there's not enough money. We have a count, two councillors sitting here who I trust, at least one is here as a parent and maybe a grandfather. They're also voting councillors. And they need to be engaged early on and understand why we might be requesting what we might end up requesting. So I would like to see that in addition to the athletic director, Dr. Posel, in that group. And I'm reminded of some years ago, when we did something similar to that, we called it a maintenance concerns committee. It was another issue. It wasn't athletic fields. But we did put together an ad hoc committee, let's call it. And some constructive things got done. Way back, we put together bonding efforts for school construction improvement. And years after that, special bonding went in place to do Rockville High School football. It seems to me like yesterday that we irrigated Rockville High's football field, put in a new track around it, and crowned the football field. I don't know. To me, that wasn't sweeping anything under the rug. We went a way out of our way to get those things done. We also worked on BCMS's field for the Little League kids. And a lot of irrigation needed to be done coming down from Eckert's Field. All of that followed the work that we did in the buildings. Then we went outside and did the work on the fields. Again, that seems like yesterday. So in my timeframe, we have a really great football field. So I'm kind of surprised as a concern about that.
Well, and I think, Dave, as you mentioned, I mean, the irrigation was broken for five years at Rockville High School and Legion Field. Now, as of last year, when it got turned back on, yes, grass can grow if it gets watered. And I think having that planned, and that's where we've been working with Bruce Denny and Craig, but Mr. Kryeski, trying to figure out what's the calendar? What do you guys have so that you know you need to roll the football field? You need to get that irrigation fixed. You need to put things on. And it shouldn't necessarily be parents calling to do that. Because you're right, a lot of money does get put in. And then the fruit of good labor is, just like your lawn at home. I mean, if you don't maintain it all the time, it doesn't stay where it should be.
I would like not to have things fall through the cracks the way they did some years ago when we had Parks and Rec and the board of it agreeing to plow, this is snow now, okay? And all of that, certain areas, and there were gaps there. So we had to have a sit-down and say, no, you guys, you're gonna do this. And that needs to be done here, I think, as well, whether it's lime fields, you know, or whatever those field requirements are. Because the Parks and Rec is recently, the whole organization on the town end has changed. And so I'm not sure who did what before. But so that we're not missing some procedures or missing some planning that goes out a year or two, that those people are involved. Because a .5 or 1.0 athletic director could decide that they would like to have X done. But, you know, if Parks and Rec and Public Works and the council say, that's not gonna happen, it's not possible. Well, you know, you can have five athletic directors. It really doesn't matter. So they all need to be putting this more strategic plan in place, I think. I'd like to ask about a couple of other, maybe smaller items. I'm a little concerned about your comments on several occasions about surveying and who surveys and where they survey and what participation rate you get and all of that. I don't know why only 50% would wanna give feedback on something as important as their athletic programs that they belong to. That's kind of a mystery. And I appreciate your comments on that. And another question, are there any issues regarding Title IX that your group envisions as to whether or not we're in compliance with Title IX or not? I'd like to know that. And I'll just throw that out there.
I couldn't speak to the Title IX issues. I'm not.
It was brought up, it was brought up in the CISC evaluation, but there aren't a lot of girls' sports. Dr. Posel tried to get girls lacrosse started. Parents went out and bought equipment, even to get it known as a club sport because we do have it in the youth. But then it was canceled. So, I mean, I don't know enough about all the laws behind Title IX. But the perception is that the boys' baseball field is certainly a lot nicer than what the girls play on for softball. And I don't know if that comes into that or not. But, I mean, we don't, we're trying to build more girls' sports. You have girls volleyball. And Dr. Posel, you know, gave a list on the map. But I don't know if it's equitable of where they stand now with Title IX between boys and girls. Like, some of the softball parents might be able to speak more to it. Anyone? Charlie, Heidi?
I know one issue that just came up this past year was with the women's softball playoff game. And parents were required, well, basically, you watched the game from the parking lot for, at the home games. And besides looking at perhaps, is that consistent with the opportunities that are presented for the other teams? Also, from a safety perspective, I think that would definitely be of concern. It's just a challenge. Heidi, do you want to add anything also?
I would just add, again, first, state championship. It was a very hot day and these girls had no shade in their dugouts. We had to have parents provide canopies for both teams there. It was just very unfortunate. Coming to the softball field, you don't sense pride. There's no, there's no, nothing showing that they were state championships two years ago. That's a huge deal. My kids didn't even go to school there, but we were just as excited as if they were going there at the time. That would be all from me.
Specific to the surveys, back when VPAG formed, part of the problem that we encountered or noticed dealing with Steve and Eric is that the surveys were somewhat limited and there was also paper handed out to select students, not necessarily full teams. They were handed out to, I guess, what is now called the Athletic Council, which is, quite honestly, they're your high achiever athletes who are, of course, are gonna give good feedback, knowing that they're handing a piece of paper back to the athletic director. Certainly, they're in no position to jeopardize their own stance within the sports at the high school, yeah, with their name on it. So what VPAG tried to do was to implement an online anonymous version, not only for the students, but for the parents. And we worked almost two years trying to get it launched successfully so that at the conclusion of the season, coaches would encourage the kids to fill this out. Parents would be notified to take, you know, to take the time. This is their chance to express what's going on or situations that they may have had. And even that was spotty at best. There were instances where teams were brought in, I think, to the library because the belief was, some of the kids didn't have access to computers to fill out the survey. Coaches, correct me if I'm wrong, but they, I was told they kind of hovered around, you know, watching the kids fill this out as the kids are trying to be honest and give some potential feedback. So there was some growing pains with that. To date, I know there is some, is still going on as far as the online?
Just parents.
Just parents?
And again, I think it goes back to Laura saying, we need much stronger communication. So we all are on the same page. We know what's going on. Surveys also were, we have a lot of young coaches coming in. And a lot of them aren't teachers anymore. So it's a different skill set. Your teachers have that intuition to mentor and coach. They do it in the classroom, they can do it on the fields. We have some really good coaches coming in. Some have coached at different levels, others have not. But what are we doing to develop those coaches? So if you get a lot of feedback and you see trending year over year, you know, one of the suggestions we made was partnering and mentoring. So you had a coach, Vican, up there who was incredible at a lot of that. He's not coaching right now, but could have mentored some of the younger coaches. So it wasn't just to give negative feedback, it was to give positive feedback. What's going well with these programs? Where can we maybe look and say, hey, like Lois said, some of the spring sports had great success. Was it because of the coaches or the players? And where do we start to look at that? If we had a question on there that we went round robin on, we were emphatic. We wanted a question on there that, are you planning to return and play next season? Because we saw the numbers flundering out the door, 10, 11 kids a year. And nobody was reaching out to them to follow up and say why. So we're making strides on that. But my kids this year did not complete one survey for four different coaches. We did ask for it to be out there online. So it was communicated like the last week of the year, the last week of the school year, that it was out there for spring sports. So I think it's just a matter of time again, of really being able to focus and come up with, you know, what's that coach's packet look like? What are they accountable for? What are the expectations to the teams? What are the rules? I mean, consistency. And as Laura keeps saying, communication has not been strong. And we always attribute it to that people are running around trying to do 5,000 things. But we all own a piece of that. And I think we need to work together because that is where it has broken down immensely. The Athletic Council used to meet every single month. My son was a part of it this year. And they have two meetings all year. That's a great resource group when you have kids that have to put in community service to help with some of more of the mundane administrative-type tasks or just, like Lois used, that group in the fall for a pep rally. And it was a lot of work, but they loved it. And that's research to build, Dave, like we said, change the culture, get it positive, get that pride back up there for RHS Rams. Because I think it has been floundering.
If I might, now I'll yield the floor. It's kind of on the money side of the questions here. I was a little bit interested in the, more than a little bit interested in the reference in one of your minutes on 516 of last year regarding advertising. And I'm not saying, I don't actually know who signed what or what you did. But it brought something home to me. And that is, I think the board needs to establish a policy system-wide on advertising in all aspects of the board's operations. operation, we do not have one, it's such a monster to try to get your arms around. Now, is it, the athletic piece of that is, may sound simple, it's, maybe not, but we can't have various organizations contracting for various fundraising endeavors, we just, you can't, I don't know if there was something signed, I don't know who signed it and what you agreed to, there was a reference to some kind of signage from the bank for as long as something existed and I don't know if that happened or it didn't, but as you can imagine, being a Board of Ed, we just can't have everybody making some kind of commitments financially or otherwise. It's not fair to the other group, it might have been a football group, it might not have been, but I think we should finally sit down and come up with a Board of Ed policy that's system-wide, whether it's for the band, the cheerleaders, anybody. And the other question with regard to money is, what has your group discussed, if anything, about pay for play?
We did bring that up with Principal Bayman, he was strongly against it with the economics of the town, he felt that you'd have a lot of scholarships, we know other towns have put in like even TNE expenses, but yet if kids can't afford to pay it, they don't. He was pretty much shut that down when we were talking to him about it because we are aware that Ram, South Windsor and some other schools have put in variations of that, Talon has done it, but yet I, you know, I would think we'd have to go out and look at market reference on a lot of things and what towns are doing. Lois said she surveyed on prices of what people charge, there's a lot of inconsistency on that per sport and the same with even the O-92 with our 188, I mean Talon, that was our football coach that had to resign in the 11th hour because Talon asked them to, him to go back and commit to being a full-time A.D. and have responsibility for the middle school and the high school, he does not have an O-92. So I mean, a lot of that, I think, would be great to hear policies and understand the whys because it seems every time we ask, we get different answers on a lot of that. And the advertising is one that we're very concerned, my husband owns this system town and you get hit up constantly for different things, but at what point do you take money in? We're getting information about when things have to go to the Board of Ed for approval. Other stadium fields, you see banners hanging around where sponsors are up there, whether, they don't care who it's for, if it's for the soccer team or the band or whoever, but it's up there to promote and put money in towards the school. I'm not sure how the activity accounts work when the money comes into some of those for advertising. But the advertising I think you were referring to is when we were looking at that mobile concession stand and how could it be used for the benefit of a lot of the sports and how are we even going to get funding for it and then some of us have to sort of chip in and help that move along. Does anybody else have any questions?
Looking at the highlights that Lois brought up and then reading your minutes over the past couple of years, both the problems and the solutions to the problems, it seems like things are resolving itself or evolving to resolve itself, but what I'm getting from your group, it's not quick enough or it could go faster, so what would be those solutions? I mean, looking at, looking at this, this looks pretty impressive, but looking at your minutes and those are all valid, issues, issues and solutions, I mean, how would you speed things up or go in a different direction? I mean, if it was up to you, up to you like right now, how could we change that?
You know, every, every year Rockville has some standout athletes, we have great kids, we have great athletes and you're going to have, you know, the great ones and not the great ones, you're going to have teams that do well and others that don't, it's consistently year after year, you want to see them, you know, you're going to have your troughs and peaks and valleys, but you know, this is all great, yes, we had some good stuff this year, but we don't want to see that flounder and go away. We need consistent communication, consistent policies, consistent protocols, when we ask a question, you know, what's the hiring process? Oh, well, you know, we get a student, we get a parent, we get a this or that, you know, what is the policy? Communication, policies, I mean, I'm hearing they have a lot of great plans in place, I'd love to hear some of them because that we don't get. What would I do right away personally? I'd make sure we were staffed correctly and have a full-time A.D. that can put in all the time and hours needed, I would have a full-time administrative assistant to help with all that, there's a lot that goes into it, just the scheduling of 25 or six varsity sports up there, forget about JV and freshman, that's a lot of scheduling to do and if things get overscheduled, things double up, there's problems with that, it's a lot to handle for one person. So, you're asking me personally what I would do, I want a full-time A.D. with a full-time administrative assistant onboard for the fall season so that we don't have to wait and see what's going to happen. And yes, this is all great stuff and I lived a lot of this, it was a fun year, it was, it was great, but you want to sustain that, you want to move that forward, you want to nurture that and I just think the eyes have been off it for a long time and I think the eyes need to be back on it and you're, Dave, you're right, all these people need to be on, in the same room, the people that maintain the fields, the people that, you know, they all need to be in the same room and say, what is our plan for these fields? What is the schedule now? When do we do this, when do we do that? I mean, it's tough to work on fields in the winter, so you've got to have a plan in place on how to maintain that. I was just at the football field this afternoon, it looks pretty good for coming through it, it doesn't get that much use, there's five home football games, maybe three soccer games, we maybe had three lacrosse games on it, it doesn't get a lot of use, three girls' soccer games maybe, so, you know, it's like the crown jewel up there that it doesn't really get the use, that's our, that's our, our look, that's our showpiece for Rockville High, you know, and when we're playing, you know, lacrosse down in the, down in the valley in a dust ball while the football field sits idle, it looks bad and I don't like bringing people in from New Milford and saying, oh yeah, the porta potty's over there or, you know, you can sit here under the tree on the hill, it just, it doesn't look, the optics are bad and that bothers me when I'm at a game. And, you know, the football field I was just at today, the 50-yard line has been repaired, I don't see any grass on it yet, but it's been repaired and Mark, I think with Public Works has done, I saw an instant change in the fields around here when they took over, they improved dramatically, I think.
Fixing the irrigation.
And, yeah, just fixing the irrigation at Legion Field and I had asked Parks and Rec for five years, they said, well, it needs to be completely replaced. I asked Mark, keeping up, and within a month it was on and working. So, I mean, communication, policies in place, transparency, what are they and what can we say from the very beginning? Consistent and sustainable.
Repeatable processes.
Repeatable processes. Like Patty said, we ask somebody a question, nine times out of 10, you ask the same question and you will get two different answers depending on when you ask because it has to fit the situation, so that's, that's my take on it.
Or an answer, time to communicate and respond to people's concerns because a lot of us are involved with various booster clubs and whether it's a coach, coaches deficiency on certain policies and practices, which we know we had, we would go to the A.D. as well. And in my, just like at my job at work, my managers and directors report up through me and I take the hit if something's going wrong. I can't spend the time to constantly have to hammer and send email after email after email and after responses. So communication in my mind was probably the weakest this year and I attributed to the time trying to do a full-time job and trying to put out all the fires that were being put out up there, but simple responses or I'll get back to you or we're looking into it helps to eliminate the 5,000 emails that I kept getting personally, and I'm exaggerating, but when a schedule's posted and every single game is at Legion Field and not at the high school. I don't know the answers, so I have to go to other people to get those answers. So I do think, as Laura and Dave have hammered the point endlessly, is we all great, you need to have a joint committee, you need to have communication and open communication so that you stop the grapevine, that you start addressing the low-hanging fruit and all these things that have been published for almost six years.
And one more thing, Dave, you had mentioned the culture, you were questioning the culture we were talking about. When we first came onboard, we spent our first, our freshman year with Cameron, you know, kind of watching, we were involved, what we were watching and the parents before us, you know, the culture was, good luck, you know, have at it, you know, we're exhausted, we're tired of dealing with this every, every year for four years, so, you know, you guys go ahead and take it and see what you can do with it. And that, is that a culture? That's a mindseter, that's, that's the culture, ah, you know, good luck, have at. And we're all volunteers, I mean, we spend endless hours, you know, trying to improve things and helping and, you know, we're here as a resource, we're not here to, we're not here to make waves, we have to be in that school, we like that school and when you hear people, you know, giving your school a bad rap, you got to stand up for it and you want everybody to do that, not just say, well, that's Rockville, expect. And that's the culture. I know people don't like to hear that and they don't like me to say that out loud, but that's it and it's out there. You spend some time on the fields, you spend some time walking around, get to some of these games, get out to some away games, the kids in the youth program hear it a lot, Scott can talk to it.
They did.
The kids hear it that going to away games, here comes Rockville or, you know, it's out there.
And like, the uniforms don't match, you know, I mean, it's always some dig about something. And I do think, to be honest, parents were extremely happy at Parents Open House this year, the culture is, it was a whole new attitude when people walked in, what we want to make sure is that it continues and, you know, this is a great document, but I am still very skeptical that we can get it done without an FTE and no admin. And why would we be paying somebody at that salary level to do a lot of administrative type work as well? I wouldn't in my job.
Yeah, I just wanted to answer your question about what I would think is most critical, if that's okay, I think it's really the feeder programs, I think, I've been down to the middle school, I've talked with all the RHS coaches toward the end of the year and I know what they'd like to see down at the middle school, the wrestling coach, the volleyball coach, those kinds of things, I met with the P.E. teachers down at the middle school, so we've talked about the coordination and what needs to be better, the boys' soccer coach, for instance, is going to go down and spend some time down there watching what the VCMF coach is doing, the VCMF coach is going to watch the tryouts of the RHS boys' soccer, so we're going to have much better coordination. One of the things in the report, you asked about the report, is they said that we should have been developing sports-specific curriculums and like what we'd expect for the kids all the way going through the youth program up in high school, that I'm sure has not been done, but I had already met with the girls' soccer coach, that she happens to coach our middle school team, she had a daughter on the high school team, so we've already talked about developing that for girls' soccer and I'm sure we can get people to get that, you know, going for it. And I think that would create that through line, I think the towns where we, they're really strong through their youth organizations up to the high school is where they have that consistency of expectations, instruction, even tactical, you know, in terms of their formations for soccer, they do the same through, through their youth level up to their high school team. So that's all things that I think we are going to be working on and that to me is where we're going to get the best bang for our buck.
We need to take a TV timeout right now.
How are you? Good, how's everything going? They're doing good, they actually went down to Cal's parents. I'm going to catch up.
So, we'll get, thank you, we'll talk.
I got some stuff to explain, so. Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, it's all good, so, good talking to you.
Next agenda item is appointment of, thank you, Burning Elementary School principal, executive session anticipated. Anyone want to motion to go executive session?
I move we go into executive sessions to discuss the appointment of the VES principal, inviting Dr. Conway.
Mrs. Beal. Third second. Mr. Colina. Get all those in favor. Okay, so, did you agree?
No, I said we should make my.
Sorry, sorry.
Thanks for taking and coming and being available and sitting up and all that.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
Anyone wanna make a motion? Mr. Gold?
I'd make a motion that the Board of Education appoint, uh,
Go on, Jack.
Jacqueline Middleton as our principal for the Vernon Elementary School.
Is there a second? Mrs. Bush?
Second.
Discussion, comments? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Now, we have one more motion, Mr. Gold.
Motion to adjourn.
To a second, Mr. Lynton. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much.